All right, good evening and welcome to the Board of Directors meeting for Powell Elementary School on the September twenty first. Looking at the agenda, the first thing if you would all stand in the public regions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the departed who wish to stand, one nation, united, invisible, liberty, justice, law.
I have to tell you, I get many, many compliments because we do this. Thank you, sir, you're the one that started it. All right. All right. We have no classroom presentation at this time, but I'm going to turn it over to our principal.
Sure. So in lieu of a classroom presentation tonight, the September board meeting, we always have a tradition of meeting the new staff members that we've hired throughout the summer time. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce a few of those staff members that are joining us here this evening. We have a paraprofessional with us and Julie Smith, if you'll stand. Thank you. Sixth grade Katie Hurley.
Oh, hello.
And sixth grade Brittany Sprague. And we have special education teacher Danielle Zino.
Welcome to Powell.
So we want to welcome each and every one of you this evening, and if you would like to just say a few words, just either about yourself, or if you just wanted to say something about our school, what you've seen so far. So Julie?
Sure. I just, I think it's, I have spent a lot of time in the district, I've been in the district about seven years as a substitute teacher, and I, this is like a cozy family. I really feel like people here are connected with the kids and the paraprofessionals and the teachers, and it's just feeling home.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, it's early.
I've been employed by Powell Elementary for the past four years as a para, I was a sub before that, so it's a great honor to actually join as a teacher this year in sixth grade, it's absolutely wonderful, you should go visit us sometime.
Welcome, thank you.
So, this is my first year here, and it is very exciting to come in, I feel very welcome as well. And we have a great sixth grade class coming through, and we rotate, we rotate through all of us, so we all get to mix up the groups and also have our own moments, so that's pretty cool.
Thank you. Danielle?
I'm Danielle, I actually live in New York, this is my brochure at Powell, I am a new special education teacher for grades two and three. Overall, it's been a really good start to the year, I've been, you know, meeting a lot of people and trying to remember names, but as you know, that's kind of tough to do. And I have a great team that I work with, and a lot of people who are willing and ready to answer questions that I may have along the way, so it's been nice.
Thank you.
Welcome, all of you, I see y'all have smiles on your faces, I hope that's a happy smile. This is a great, it's a great school to work in, you'll find out.
And board members, if you'll just introduce yourselves as well to our new staff, that'd be great.
Okay, Jim, we'll start with you.
I'm Jim O'Connor, I'm in the sixth grade, I'm Kyra Hurley, no relative I know, I don't think, I'm her grandfather, I live here in Powell, obviously. Welcome to all four of you.
Todd Steinhardt, first year on the board, I have two children in school, and resident of Powell, obviously, welcome.
Tammy Soul, my daughter went through Powell, I've been on the board for several years, welcome.
Angie Rawling, I went to school here, both of my children went to school here, I've been on the board a long time.
Welcome. I should have. I'm Cindy Brownell, chair of the board, and I've been on the board seventeen years. So, welcome, we're very pleased.
I'm sixty-nine.
You've been sixty.
So we have a great start of the school year, and I'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later on, but want to welcome you to our staff, and it's been a great beginning, so thank you for joining us.
Feel free to come, we meet everyone, every, the first, third Wednesday of every month at five thirty, right here in the library, feel free to come and join us. Thank you. Okay, is there any public comment? Okay, here none? I like the way I moved that one fast. All right, under action items, financial, the treasurer's report for July and August enclosed, was there any discussion on either one of those, July or August?
Does it even know what the correction was?
Under the?
The treasurer's report.
There was a correction?
Is it the date? Okay, I don't know, I didn't look back. I'll ask you on this one.
Corrected. No, it didn't stick out.
August was corrected, I don't remember why.
You have any idea, Jim?
Unfortunately, I don't, I'm wondering if it was just a corrected one that was sent to Mary Lee, and then Mary Lee just put it in that way.
Okay. Are you looking just?
I'll double check.
Double check the other ones, okay. All right, is there?
Updated.
I need a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Motion's been made, I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Right.
All right, now we have the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion to be made, second, is there any discussion?
Yes, there is.
Yes, sir.
I usually pick on Mr. Kulkane about this, as far as the nomination form for the para, I think when you're presenting something to a board of directors, we should have the total salary on the nomination form, not the price per hour, and the nominations form sells, sometimes do and sometimes don't, give the total salary, but as a, as a, as a board of directors, we need to know the impact on the, we can calculate it out, and I did, but it'd be nice if the budgetary impact for this decision was on there.
I think, Danielle, you had asked about that, let me just respond to that one. I find that it's almost like a pattern they use, when they, when they hire someone and they write it out, I think that's why every time it's, you ask that question every, every time, but I think it's just the system that they use, and it just doesn't spit that out when they print it out.
Simple to add, if they're presenting it to us, it's something to issue. We need to know if it's a fifteen thousand dollar job or a ninety thousand dollar job.
They don't spend upon the hours worked, though, right?
No, no, but they're scheduled.
Yeah, and you can, you figured it out, I mean, it's just, it's not that you can't, you don't know it, but I see what you're saying, we can ask again, but I don't know, it's a program they use, is what I'm trying to say. I understand that, you can just ask.
I think you're both right, that you could calculate, it could be calculated for you. I think that what's written here is what's written in each contract, so for the teacher's contracts, it's a little bit different, the salaries are written as an annual amount, and for the para contract, for the administrative assistance, it's written as an hourly rate for the different categories of that, those positions in the contract.
All the details I have.
But it could be calculated out, that's what you're requesting.
As a board of directors, sometimes a lot of this stuff is too much detail, and we just need to know what's the, what's the total, and it doesn't speak to health, we don't know what this, what this position, I'm advocating for a total cost on a position, loaded salary, benefit.
I don't think any of them gave you that.
I know, but I would like to see it. So we know what we're voting for.
That would be a big difference.
I've been asking for it for years.
Just keep asking.
I'm going to have some questions.
Go ahead, what's your next question?
Okay. We have a telephone in the elevator now? It's a separate, it's Berkshire Communications, it's on page two.
We've always had a call from the elevator.
Has that always been a phone in the elevator?
It needs to be.
There has to be, what if it gets stuck?
No, but it's a separate, why is it a separate charge? It's fifty bucks, that for a month, the question, why is it a separate charge?
Is that an emergency services charge?
I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think you've ever seen, I know the phone's been there, but I have never seen a separate charge.
Okay, and then.
Just tells a pager.
There was another, there was another telephone charge for eight-two-three-oh-oh-five-four, I'll find it.
You should highlight it.
I am, I am.
You did.
It goes into, it goes into the office. The big question I have, I'll get, I'll get back to that one, but it was six hundred dollars for a eight-two-three number, that wasn't the school number, it's to the secretary, I called it, and it's the secretary's phone.
That would be for the subcaller?
I don't know, no, it was, not Ms. O'Neil, get her name.
Martel?
Martel, so it's Ms. Martel.
Cell phone to Ms. Martel.
No, no, it was a, it was a line number, it's here, I'll find it before the end of the meeting. Okay, this, this, this next question is for Jim.
What page are you on?
I'm on page seventeen. And this is just to say it out in the open, and to discuss it a little bit. First of all, my comment, my compliments, this is the SVSU bill, okay, Jim? I just think it should be mentioned out loud that we're paying the SVSU for these different items, what they are. And Donna's here, so the first one is curriculum services, eleven thousand dollars, what is that for, Donna? I just want to go through it.
I haven't seen you in a while.
Pardon?
Eleven thousand?
For curriculum services, this is the Supervisor Union Charge Act of Powell.
This is just a breakdown of everything we pay.
Oh, so you're, so you're breaking out all of your assessments, is that what?
Yeah, well, yes. The bill is broken out, that's what I was going to say out loud, what they are.
Well, it would be everything that's under the curriculum budget, which is the staff that's in the curriculum department, it's any materials that are bought through the curriculum department of the SVSU, it's for contracted services through the SVSU, it's for any professional development opportunities that people go to that are part of the contracted opportunities that all staff members can have.
That's our chair reporting.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. All of them are.
I guess a question for Jim, an audit of fifteen hundred, on page eighteen, that seems low, I thought it was six thousand.
You have to understand, this bill is only one quarter of the assessment, all right, we bill it four times a year.
Another pit fool piece to me, four years ago, I wandered around the building looking for the resource room, and I was told it would be taken off his budgets, and it's still here, elementary resource room, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, they must have stereo and lounges in there, and that's special ed. But, but, so just, I think it will be, again, elementary resource room, two hundred and seventy-six, which is a thousand dollars, okay, I'd rather see it more directly described, again, this resource room is stuck in there, and it's just, you know.
We'll change the wording.
If we, if we can get it out. And the other one I wanted, I just want to point out to everybody, we'll get, there's two more, consultating plus thirty-five thousand, what kind of consulting do we get for thirty-five thousand dollars?
That's the ongoing problem.
Thank you. And the last one, Cindy, is transportation, twenty thousand dollars, that's one-fourth of the transportation cost? So you're saying our bus services are eighty thousand now?
It's around that, the first billing is, I think, eighteen or thirteen percent.
It's seventy-eight thousand dollars total, it was supposed to be fifty-nine.
Four regular buses, I think.
That's correct.
Yes.
That would be spent.
No. That would be separate.
Here on the, so the total quarterly bill, the Supervisor Union is five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's, those are monies that are not spent by Mr. Phillips necessarily, but by Supervisor Union in charge actually, it's a big number, I think we could talk about it one more time. Okay. And then I had one curious one, I can't find it, but you could tell me later, we're paying, we're doing a garnishment and paying the Federal Department of Education a hundred bucks, I lost it here somewhere, oh, here it is, here it is.
Doesn't that mean when somebody's?
The U.S. Department of Education.
The check is being garnished, right, and you have to pay it.
No, but we're paying the U.S. Department of Education a hundred bucks, it's listed as wage garnishment, that seems, how's that happen? Why are we paying the U.S. Department of Education?
There are many ways that, different organizations that are asking for garnishments, and it could be any, could be a government agency or something, that's not a payroll thing, and really.
The U.S. Department of Education, it seemed like a strange, I thought they gave us money.
I think a lot of those questions you have, you probably could just contact Renee or even Jim, you know, prior to the meeting.
I just wanted the assessments, I wanted to say, because it's two million bucks, that's much, a lot of money. Thank you, Cindy, for your.
No, you're not, probably, so moving right ahead, we're going to go to policy, policies, well, we only have one, one-zero, two-zero, this is to warn, and it's visits to school. I need a motion?
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion on policy twenty, ten-twenty?
One question, the change is school board members, I don't see a difference.
Well, weren't we loved together with the visitors, the community members?
Yes.
They've broken it out now.
Yes, they actually changed.
Because it all goes back to some school board members, were going into the schools without permission and upsetting teachers, and they don't have the right to do that. You're not a school board member unless you're sitting at this table, you're just one person when you go into the building, when you're by yourself.
And I always say, but here it is, Jim, united we stand, divided we fall. We used to have a board member who would come through that door with a chip on his shoulder because he was, i.e. school board member, and it was very distracting, he would even go out in the playground and he would intimidate the teachers. So I think this is a good idea, we are no different than anybody else, we just come in and we check with the principal, we usually don't come in and wander the building anyways, but.
I was just saying, because it seemed like we were included before with communities, whatever.
They wanted to separate it.
Right.
They wanted to make it more clear.
That's all, just.
Okay. So is any, any other discussion on the policy? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, unanimous. All right, do we have a facilities update?
I think the only other thing that we have to finish up yet is when we have a lockdown and the strobe lights are on, we're going to have a new keypad.
Right, yes.
For the front, but they can't install that keypad until there's a day off, so the Columbus Day, Monday vacation, you'll have a new keypad up front here with all staff members and board members needing codes, would have their own code, so those two would be combined into one, and we'll have one downstairs as well.
I thought they were combining.
That is for the entire, they are, it's for the entire building, so if you come in downstairs, you use your same code to enter the building.
Because right now it's separate.
Right.
So what they're doing now is status quo until they change it on Columbus Day weekend?
Correct.
Okay, great.
But other than that, everything is done, the gym floor looks great, and all of the other projects that we've done.
All completed.
Really good.
Yes, we have it, excellent, excellent.
And I think that's all that Kevin wanted me to update, he couldn't come tonight, but that's all he wanted me to update the board with.
He spent many, many hours here.
Please thank him for us.
Will do.
Yes, thank him for us. All right, now we are down to the superintendent's report.
Well, I am fortunate to be with you here again tonight.
And we are very pleased to have you.
Thank you so much. I just off the, I made a short list, I told Todd, I always try to make my lists on sticky notes, so I don't go on and on and on, but I do have a few items for you. I just wanted to mention that on Tuesday night, there is going to be an Act Forty-Six Forum at the Bennington Firehouse, the Bennington Select Board and the SVSU are co-sponsoring a fact-finding forum, where we are inviting some of the people from the Agency of Education who will actually give us an update on the status of Act Forty-Six, and some of the consolidations that have happened statewide, and what, what the expectations are for us now in this current timeframe.
What time? September?
Six to eight, the twenty-seventh.
Six to eight, okay.
At the Firehouse.
At the Firehouse, so we are included in that.
But all districts are included, and encouraged to attend, because all of the information really affects all of us, and that there are a lot of facts that really are kind of out in the air right now, and I think that we need to take a moment and bring it back down to the reality of what Act Forty-Six is. Donna Russo Savage is going to be with us from the Agency of Education, she was involved with the writing of the law, and really knows about the current status of it at this point. We are also looking forward to, I believe Brad James is going to be with us, and he is the finance officer from the state, and he will also be able to give us some comment on the potential impacts of Act Forty-Six for us. So it should be a very informative night.
Now, is that, everybody can?
Anyone can comment, it's a public forum. I also would like to just mention that I'm going to call Mike out in front of the, in front of the camera, come on, Mike Cutler, come on, Mike Cutler, he, he won't come out in front of the camera.
Yes, he will.
But I want to say that he, I met with him and Ryan Scott, who also helps from Cat TV to film many of our events, and together we are working on a video project to really highlight some of the very positive things that are going on within our schools, I sent an email to Todd and all the principals yesterday to ask for, give us each, three ideas from each school at least to start, for what is a project that you would like to just have a video spot on Cat TV, and we're going to involve some of the students, it may be at the middle school or high school, and there is an intern from the CDC, from Mr. Foley's class, that is going to help us do some of that production, and we are going to work on going into the schools and really personalizing some of the wonderful instructional opportunities that are available.
The grammar schools.
All the schools, all the schools, the more the merrier.
And I'll tell you, in the many, many years, many people have said to me, what have you done at the school?
I know, so we're going to make that real for people.
Good.
And video is really, I'm sure that, that Mike and Ryan are both true believers, that video is really a great way to get the message out now, and people looking at their phones all the time, and on, you know, Facebook and YouTube, and so we're going to really, we have a couple themes in mind, and a couple wonderful ideas to carry this forward, and maybe make some of these little spots into a little bit longer, more informative videos. One of the ones we referred to was when they, when your students did the trout hatching in the classroom, and then recorded that, and when they were releasing the baby trout.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're going to do many, many more of those, we're going to start small, you know, not make them too long, just so we can feature a lot of different things that are going on, but from all the different schools, so it should be very exciting.
That is great.
And Ryan did help, last year we had a fifth grade classroom do a pinhole camera project.
Yes, he talked about that.
That was another one, too, that our kids were really engaged with, and even the high school students, there was a connection there, which was a great highlight of.
Yeah.
And it makes the kids feel good about themselves, too.
Yes, yeah, and families will see their, see their students, you know, on the, on the TV, and share with their friends, and I think it's a really good way to get the word out about.
Even though we still have a few areas in town that are unable to get the cable, but.
Well, yes.
Hopefully they can, help us at a neighbor.
Yeah, but it's all, it will all be online, so anyone can access it, it'll be very available. Yeah, and the outreach is really important, and I'd have to say Ryan and Mike are the masters at how we're going to facilitate that, and they, they know where the big counts are, where, what most people are looking at, and we'll just shoot it to the places, even, even the titles make a difference in how many people will be watching them, so.
That's great.
These guys are awesome, and they are going to be instrumental in making this happen for us.
That's good news.
I would just mention that we are tomorrow beginning our math professional development, we have gone through all the different grade levels, this, just focusing on two grade levels each year, this year we're focusing on grades two and four, and they are starting tomorrow with Pat Conway and Melissa Cynical and Laura Boudreau, to really focus in on the math standards, and what do they mean, what is that content, what are the new concepts, and how to best teach those to our students for their, for their learning, and then really looking at formative assessments that are done in the classroom to help the teachers understand what are students learning, and, and what are still the challenges, so that they can adjust their instruction to be more effective. The results of this in other classes over the past two years have just been really remarkable, the improvement in the level of student achievement, so.
We saw it set up when we went into our meeting.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
We didn't touch anything.
Don't touch those things, Laura knows where they are, don't touch them.
Except Todd, even then he made a mess every day.
So I think that's the exciting news, and we will be doing a data presentation on the results for this school, we're still waiting for S-BAC results, we have not gotten official release of those, and we have not seen the, the state, usually, every year they will go through, and, and we can, we have ours in a very draft form, which we are not able to release at this time, but they update what the results were across the whole state, so it can be a comparative model to see how, how our results look with the rest of the state, but they're not finished, have not released the results yet, so we're still waiting to give our, our presentation to you, which we were hoping to do tonight, but we still don't have results.
Not if you're waiting for the state.
And we did just also hear that we will be getting the science kneecap results very soon, so we'll probably be able to include those, too.
Excellent.
Probably next time.
They don't move too fast.
Probably next time, yeah.
Good.
And that's it.
That's it?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, you brought some really good news. See, now it's the principal's report.
Sure. So I was going to mention our presentation next month, because as you remember, last month at our school board meeting, I said tonight we'd have a presentation about our goals, our action goals in math and ELA, and, you know, just the results, just in our measures of academic progress, we've really shown growth here, we looked at that two to five percent increase, and I, and I know we made that increase, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll share that next month, so that's a presentation to look forward to.
May I interrupt you, Mr. Principal?
You may.
I would just commend the staff here, and, and Mr. Phillips at Powell, because the growth in student, student achievement here has just been phenomenal, and it continues to just go up, it, you know, since the, they have implemented some of the research-based strategies, and really following up on what is best first instruction, the improvements here have been really stellar in our example for the other schools, and we really are looking at the strengths here at Powell, to help bring some of the other schools along in following some of the strategies that they've used here, because it really is tremendous, really done a great job.
Thank you.
That's, that's good to hear, because.
So to continue on, we had a very successful open house at the beginning of the school year, the barbecue, of course, we always have to thank John Peaslee for grilling for us, and he's even looking to donate a grill, and we would keep it in our back shed, and he would just have to carry back and forth the propane tank instead of the whole grill, so I said we'd sure be thankful for that donation, so we'll look forward to that maybe by next month. Picture day, the thirtieth of September, the staff and students always look forward to picture day, and other than that, I think that's it for this month, I think next month we'll really dive into a lot of the things that our, our board and public are looking for.
That's good.
Can I just ask one question?
You may.
How's the busing situation?
The busing situation, it is, there are a few bumps, but actually overall, it's going well, the second day of school, Cindy was here, it was not a good day to observe from a board member, because it was chaos, it was not good, even the first day of school was much better. All buses are here. All buses are here by the bell at 8:15 in the morning, no problems there. At the end of the day, we have three buses that are here by three o'clock and we have one bus that comes in a little bit later, about five to seven minutes late. As the classes come out, we gather those students together and either myself and Mr. Madison, we kind of corral those bus students together. When the bus gets here, they load on and off they go. I would just say the one thing that we could maybe improve on is the communication between the school and the buses because we're not allowed to call to the buses anymore, there's not that communication piece because we have to call Du-4, Du-4 then calls the buses and we knew that was going to be, you know, a stickler and an issue and it has shown its face here a few times, but overall I think, you know, our kids are coming to school, they're happy, there's smiles on their faces when they get on and off the bus and that's what we want, so.
We don't want to disrupt them.
Right, but thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to come up and just meet who, just who is transporting our children, so I thought it was, it was pretty neat. One thing, it was brought to my attention that one of the buses is here at the school all night, every night on the weekend, so I called, I called Du-4 and I told Du-4 that the Pownell taxpayers do not want to be held responsible if anything happens to their bus that's being left here. And the woman that, from the insurance company for Du-4, sent a letter and actually I want to pass it on to Tammy to read because of her legality, they just explained that they have a lot of insurance to cover the buses, but my thought was, I still did not see a word that Pownell School was held harmless and I guess that's what I was looking for. But I was assured that we, they won't be held harm, we, it's not a responsibility, but just to make sure, because the phone call did come through, I needed to follow up on it. And the other good news about the drivers after 18 months, we have contracts with the two gentlemen and now the buses are going to be taken care of. We have contracts like the board had agreed, Ruth, Bruce and Joel have their separate contracts and they are taking the buses one by one, inspecting them and getting them ready for any field trips. And I just wanted to remind the teachers, too, if they ever need a driver for any of the buses that are even out here, they need to call Whitey. What's her first name?
Diana.
Diana.
Yep, we have that in place.
She's, she's the only one that has allowed through the board's permission to ride, to ride the buses.
We have that in place and Bill informed me that all the buses are now inspected.
They're inspected, okay, good. Yeah, so that was, that was good, it was such a relief. As a matter of fact, when they, they signed the contracts, I came right up, got them, took them right to central office. I said, no, these are not going to send in the mail and thank you for your help, Du-4.
Is there an end date on the contract? How long are they for? How long are the contracts?
For a year, it's a year, it's a year contract, yes. Right, and hopefully by the end of next year, we will be dealing with a different issue, so we have to think positive about it. All right, our next board meeting, it will be October 19th at 5:30 and for your information, we have the budget status report included, the SVSU student enrollment and the minutes of August 30th for Act 46.
A comment on the student enrollment? There's no numbers here for SPED?
It's on the back, right?
No, it wasn't on there. I don't know if they have that yet.
I'll check into that, see if it's something that's missing or if it's never been there.
Yeah, it's been there.
No, it's been there.
Oh, yeah.
I'll check to find out.
It's probably just an oversight.
And I'm going from memory, but it's saying last year we were 18%, I thought we were higher than that. Do you know, Todd, is that the right number?
I think it was, yep.
18%? Okay. I thought we were over 20.
No, we were, um, what do you think?
Forty's, as far as population numbers.
Two or three years ago, we were.
So, Todd, I just fed up with that, we were 44 last year and about how many?
Pretty similar.
About same?
Yep, maybe a few less.
Good.
Okay, so is there any other business to come before the board?
A comment on Act 46, everybody in, and I'm trying to just be honest with this, there was discussion of Pownell merging with Shastberry at the very last 46 meeting, okay? And if MAU is dissolved and Pownell merges with Shastberry, it's a, the big plus for Pownell is we have school choice for, for seven through 12, all right? If MAU goes away and we merge with Shastberry, that was the little motivation of Shastberry and Pownell talking. And another, another scenario, if Pownell merges, and, and that would be property value, what's the word for it? We held property values in Pownell, school choice. We could, we could, the money follows the kid and it's a state average, wherever the state average is for seven through 12, that money would follow the kid to whatever high school he wants. That's if, a couple of things happen. And the other, the other scenario is if we merged with, with Bennington, the total, the total tax burden for Pownell is about $5 million, it would drop almost a million for the first few years because the average student cost in Pownell is considerably higher than Bennington. We would get averaged in, so the total tax assessment, if we merged with Bennington, would drop because we would, just like with the buses, we would get averaged in. So we wouldn't, whatever was costing here, we'll get combined with, with Bennington and the tax burden for, for Pownell. So there's two favorable things, I'm, I'm not, at no point was I in favor of merger, I think the supervisor, personally, I think the supervisory union just stay the way it is, okay? But as we're talking merger, those are two big pluses. One is school choice, if we go with Shastberry and MAU goes away and if we merge with Bennington, our, our tax base drops for a few years and so what probably happens, Bennington won't cut their stuff, they'll see what Pownell has and add more, so, that's all. Everybody should be there next Tuesday, it's really, really important, this, this is really getting out of hand.
So you're done with the meetings now, Jim? There's no more?
Act 46 committee, committee was dissolved primarily for the benefit of North Bennington.
So there's no letter, recommendation going with the state like you originally had planned?
No, not at this point.
Nothing, there's nothing right now, nothing right now.
And Laurie Linger actually serves on the Act 46 as a community member for Pownell.
But that's over with, so.
Yeah.
Just so you know, both Laurie and I voted against dissolving. The minutes are in your packet.
Yeah.
But Laurie and I both voted against dissolving the committee, but.
So what's the next step? This forum and then that's it?
No, I think we have to, we have to reappoint someone for.
No, no, nothing's happening. It's a mess. There's no Act 46, it's a mess.
The committee is disbanded.
Yes.
And we can talk to anybody we want about mergers or not talk to anybody we want about mergers or we just wait until after the election and this thing maybe goes away.
But I thought we had an obligation to send a letter up to the state.
We do.
We do.
So we're just not going to?
Uh, Mike.
Well, the SVSU will be meeting to discuss what is going to happen next.
Yeah.
At their meeting on the 28th, but the committee's disbanded, so they would have to start all over to create a new committee and have that approved by all the boards and then start over.
If there's new committee, it won't be North Bennington. North Bennington made a mistake by drawing the committee, in their opinion, because they're a school choice and they just didn't fit with us. They shouldn't have drawn it in the first place and the only way they could do what they want to do is to disband, so it was, it was high risk, we disband, now we got to get back together again. It's like getting divorced and wanting to get married again and it's, it was hard just the first time.
And we're in a very short timeline.
Yeah, so it's a.
When was our letter due?
Uh, the timeline is that we would have to have a plan decided on, to present to the Agency of Education, probably sometime in December, January.
This year?
So that they, yes, so that they could approve, the AOE has to approve whatever the articles of agreement are on the plan that the group decides on and then, then that needs to go to the voters in the March election.
So this meeting.
To be in, to be in place by June of 2017 and to be implemented by 2018.
When does the state step in and decide that they're going to decide for us? Um, you know, obviously we're not going to have.
Come to the forum and you can ask them yourself.
It's about a year, it's about a year away, next, next fall.
I would say by, by June of this year, they will be starting to ask questions.
But the overview is, is that I think we're the second biggest supervisory union in the state, we have, I was pointing out this $2 million we're sending to supervisory union, everything's consolidated anyway. We're, we're a model for the state, okay? They want, they want 900, we've got 2,700 students.
So what we have to do is prove to this woman that, that actually helped write the Act 46, that this is what we've already.
It has nothing to do with us.
Everybody's not going to fit in a little circle.
Yep.
And we're just a little different from that and I think we're, we're ahead of them.
Yeah, but we're doing fine.
Right, but who does that? I mean, we have no committee to do that now. That's right.
The what?
Who does that? Who convinces this lady now that we're the model for Vermont, that we shouldn't be, you know, forced to consolidate?
Well, we have to, the supervisory union has to.
Back on you, Donna. Form, form a new committee.
Form a new committee.
That will need to be approved by all the, all the districts and then they will need to write a proposal for what is, what is it that everyone agrees to as the model that we want to adopt.
And if we don't disband, because these are legal corporations, there's 250 invisible, 250, what's the word for the, anyway, the, the school corporations, just schools, districts, and they're a legal entity and that's where the voters have to vote, to dissolve it, to give up our sovereignty, if you will. If we just, if we argue that we don't change, that we're good enough, we're better than everybody else anyway and math, and financially we are, okay, the, the per student for our 2,700 students is the second lowest in the state, we've got good numbers, we're doing, we're doing well. And MAU was perfect, so.
We just, we just have to let the powers that be know that and maybe, maybe we'll know on that meeting.
They do know, but you should come and find out what the realities are on Tuesday because these are the people that in essence will be helping to make the decisions.
Are they going to bring figures? Because I guess they asked for figures at the last meeting and the gentleman that was the facilitator said they weren't ready, they'd bring them to our next meeting and lo and behold, the meeting was canceled.
That's where my million dollars comes from, it's easy to calculate, it's, you don't have to.
Well, it also depends what model you're choosing, how you, how you do the finances, how you decide on the numbers because it will make a difference how it's formatted.
A question, is North Bennington going to be there at this meeting?
Everyone's invited.
The whole disbanding was to let North Bennington go.
And I only say that because the last three meetings I was at, 45 minutes to an hour was on nothing but North Bennington and the rest of us never got a whole lot accomplished.
Back in the wintertime, North Bennington decided they want to leave and Superintendent and everybody else said, no, it was illegal to do that, so we spent the last four or five months trying to, so we finally, they finally decided the only way for Bennington, North Bennington to leave, if we dissolve. And the tricky, the tricky part of that is then we have to get together again and that's what's going to happen on Tuesday, maybe.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, appreciate it. So I, it sounds like it's really important, so if, if any of yous guys can make it, that would be a plus, so we all get to think, find out what's going on, maybe.
Will it be televised?
I'm sure it would be, yes. I did read that in the paper that.
Will you be there? Not sure if it will.
Not sure if it's live?
Right, but we'll get it.
But you'll be there, yeah, okay, that's good to know. All right, Bill, I see you're here.
Hi.
Do you have any words of wisdom for us?
Well, wisdom, this is the place where wisdom's supposed to come from, how would I give wisdom to a school? I think what I really would like to say to start with, I'd really like to congratulate the school on first day this year, thought it was well organized, I thought it was memorable to all of the, everybody who attended. I know it was for me, I bet it would be for all of those students, you know, I think that's very important, you know, to remember is to get off to that start. Jim, I appreciate your comments and, you know, the incredibly difficult and hard lift Act 46 is turning out to be. I don't think anybody would have contemplated the idea that a supervisory unions that was one would become two or three, that is just nonsensical for, I, I understand how hard it's going to be to, you know, now that there's the dissolution, to put back together, you know, what needs to be done. My overall feeling is that I hope that by the time the legislature convenes is that this supervisory union, the people here have a position that they can put on the table that the legislative delegation can run with and defend. It'll be a lot harder if there's no position put out there. That will be the, you know, the hardest place to affect positive change in any laws as they get reviewed, so I really encourage people to do their best work together and I think as I've always said, I've considered us merged, but I haven't considered the merger to be perfected and I think there's work that would be valuable for us to say, here are places where the supervisory union could do even better and to be more effective at delivering, you know, both opportunities and being, you know, cost-effective, you know, that's the grail and as you know, you know, the details, when you get into them with each particular entity having its own culture and its own interests, makes it even more challenging than I think anybody would have imagined.
That's good and then we so, in other words, we have like from here now until January to come up with that convincing letter.
The only way out is to work, do the, challenge people to do their best work together from whatever perspective they bring, you know, basically for the students and our future.
Absolutely, I mean, that's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
That's right.
But thank you.
And we want the best for them, thank you. And if there's anything you can do for us in Mount Pilgrim, maybe you can whisper in one of those gentlemen's ears or ladies that's on that committee, we sure would appreciate it because sometimes Pownell gets forgotten and I know Vermont stops in Rutland sometimes.
Yes, that is.
That is true.
One of the challenges and.
Yes, but we are down here.
In the world today.
And we're working hard to educate our children and someday a president who was educated right here in Pownell Elementary may become our president.
There you go.
You never know, that's our goal.
I would, if you have time, I'd tell you one anecdote that I think gives me courage is that I was talking to the Rogers family, Asa Rogers, is a product of this school, he went on to UVM, he studied in the engineering school and now he's back and he had internships, he was recruited and he's working at Apicus, which is probably, they do robotics.
Yes, yes.
Original robotics and I think, you know, there are some real examples of, of wonderful examples of what we're doing with kids and I would also say is that I've had the good fortune to see many fifth grades over the years here, before they come up to Mount Pilgrim and go in and talk with them. I was extremely impressed with this last fifth grade, your granddaughter, Jim, she's really lovely person and their ability to focus, to ask good questions, to have a very excellent conversation for over an hour, that's pretty good for fifth grade and I think the teachers sort of finally had to break it up and we would have kept going and that same spirit, I think I saw it actually in the State House when they were on, on their trip, so we, we should never lose sight of where we're making young lives, young families better.
That's true.
So, and congratulations to Todd and the culture that you put in the school and the school board and backing that up.
That's right. He's a plus for this building, we know that. We're not going to let him go anywhere. Is there any, anyone else have any comments or if there's no other business to come before the board, will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Donna, for coming down here.